Good evening and welcome to this December 9, 2024, the Slovenia Board of Education. Adam, please call me now.
Ms. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Conklin?
Here.
Ms. LaVelez?
Here.
Mr. Boden?
Here.
Mr. Fellers.
Please rise for the political allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think we're starting off with a presentation this evening.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have the pleasure tonight of having this Melissa McDonald here. She is the Director of Student Support Services, and she is here to get an overview of our Threat Assessment Protocol, of which was determined by the state actually we trained about a year and a half ago.
Twenty twenty-two.
Two, two years ago. Wow, time flies. But we started down the road with some requirements from the Ohio Department of Education in regards to how we each receive, when we receive a threat at school. So I've asked Melissa to be here tonight to explain to the board our protocol, things that are variables or factors for consideration. So Melissa, the floor is yours. Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you. So each of you, I put together a packet that has a copy of the presentation along with our in-house documentation. On the bottom of each attachment, I put the slide numbers that it correlates with the presentation, and I will refer to that as we move along. So there are two interrelated goals when it comes to threat assessment. One is obviously to prevent violence, and the other is to resolve conflicts or problems that underlie any threatening behavior. So we want to provide support for students and make sure that we are giving them any help or assistance or intervention that they may need. A big takeaway from the new training that our district went through starting in 2022 is when it comes to threats and treating them, zero tolerance is kind of a thing of the past when it comes to the discipline, but it's more of how can we be proactive and providing more support for students that may need that. So our district originally came up with threat assessment protocol back in 2014. This was a subcommittee from our District Safety and Security Committee. I was, we went to a training in 2014 down in Findlay. Mr. Zeroff and I both served on that subcommittee years ago, and we did have a brief district threat assessment procedure. But since then, through House Bill 123, all districts have to implement some kind of district-wide procedure. Most schools in the state are going with the C-STACK model, which is the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines Intervention and Support to Prevent Violence. And that is what our district has based our model off of as well. We do have different teams. There is a district team if there were ever a district-level threat, and on that team of people that are trained are Dr. Motley, Mr. Zeroff, Mr. Tiber ski, myself, a school psychologist, and one of our social workers attended the training. At the high school level, our threat assessment teams are the principal and assistant principal of student services, a dean, counselor, teacher, and the school resource officer. At the junior high and elementaries, it's a principal and assistant principal, counselor, and teacher. So that's what we have kind of required as a district, but most of our buildings have exceeded that minimum standard and have more people trained. Right now, we have a total of eighty-two staff members that have gone through the C-STACK training. We're also holding a training in June when our principals are still around with our entire administrative team at the building level to renew their C-STACK training because it does let, every three years, you do have to renew it. This is kind of hard to see up there. That's why I made copies. It is the first attachment. This is the Threat Assessment Responsive Protocol. This is kind of the decision tree on the cover page, and it walks you through how a team may start on what level a threat is. You know, you evaluate the threat and situation. It might not be a threat. It might be an expression of anger that merits attention. It may be a transient threat. It may be a substantive threat, a serious substantive threat, or a very serious substantive threat. When anything gets to that very serious protocol, the entire packet is required by the building to complete when they are assessing that threat in its entirety. And if you look at that decision framework, it leads you in the direction of what you should do. What's, it gives you suggestions of supports and/or when discipline factors in that as well. Once again, for the very serious substantive threat, within that packet, there's an overview with that decision tree. There's a threat report, assessment findings, interviews, key observations, threat classification, a case plan that is to be reviewed monthly by that building's threat assessment team. And then there's also a threat outcome summary. So at the end of each school year, the threat assessment team goes through and looks at any threat assessments that they may have, and they come to a conclusion or add any additional notes to that threat. The observation suggesting need for intervention is the next document. Any of these documents can be used for any level of threat. Just when we get to that very serious one, we do use them all, but you may use each individual attachment as needed for lower-level threats. So there is a document for observation suggesting need for intervention. This is optional to be used as needed, and it is included in the threat assessment protocols. The next document is a safety planning interview, and it provides questions and prompts for interviewing different people that may be related to the case. Once again, this may be used at any level, but it is required for any threat that is deemed a very serious substantive threat. It includes interviews with the subject and parents or guardians. The purpose of the interview is to maintain the safety and well-being of the student and others, and therefore, the assessment has two objectives. One is treatment and referral needs, and two is to reduce that threat. There is a threat response form. This is optional for our lower-level threats, but once again, required for very serious substantive, and it has a list of common actions that can be taken in response to the threat. Each case may require a unique set of actions, and it may not be limited to what's just on this sheet, but these are recommendations that have come through the C-STACK training. We also have a mental health assessment report template. This is optional to be used as needed. The purpose of the mental health assessment is to maintain the safety and well-being of the student and/or potential victims. This form could be completed by a school psychologist, a school counselor, and/or a social worker. It can also be done by an outside agency. However, the training that we have attended does suggest that a school-based professional conducts this because they may be more knowledgeable of the school environment and the experiences of that student. So it is just a template that someone could use if they met with that student. Once again, the two objectives for that are the treatment and referral needs and to reduce the threat. There's also an optional template for a behavior intervention plan, which identifies the behaviors along with the frequency and intensity and duration of those behaviors, and addresses the prevention, alternatives, reactions, outcomes, and communication of what is to take place when students are exhibiting that behavior. The last thing attached, the last document is a one-pager, and everything that is underlined on that one pager provides our administrative team to links to each one of those documents, and it explains what each one is used for. So our entire administrative team has access to this when they're dealing with any possible threats. And I did print the first link as well. It is common questions that come up for threat assessments, so you can take a look at that. Just if buildings have any questions, this is something they can refer to. For some of the lower-level or transient threats, this process may be done by one individual of the threat assessment team, but when we get into more of a substantive threat, you do pull multiple members of the team and possibly the whole team together. Some key points about threat, oh, excuse me, threat assessments is high-profile school shootings have generated an exaggerated perception of danger in schools. Because of the fear of school violence, school authorities sometimes overreact to student behaviors that are not actually dangerous. Profiles and warning signs can lead to false identification of students who are not truly dangerous, and threat assessment offers a more flexible alternative to zero-tolerance punishment because it emphasizes an understanding of the context and the meaning of the student's behavior. And the threat assessment itself emphasizes investigating and resolving the threat in order to prevent the violence and not quantifying or increasing that risk. Questions? I know I threw a lot of, I threw like a whole day training to you in about eight.
I have a question about step two.
Yeah.
So if the student makes a threat, and then when the student is interviewed, retracts the threat or says, "I was kidding," is that basically just taken at face value? I mean, how do you make that?
Oh, there, I mean, in school safety, you could what if a lot of different situations, but I think if they retract it, there's a lot more that goes into that investigation. You're going to be interviewing the person that reported it, other people who may have heard it. You're going to look at the tone and how things are said. You're going to look at that student's history. Is this the first time they've said it? Have they said something along these lines multiple times? Has it increased over time? So it's not, they're providing their due process, and their version of the story is just one part of that investigation, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I was just reading about how the references to, if the student says that they, you know, were joking or retracts it or something, and that it's just deemed transient if, you know, what else went into that determination?
Other students, witnesses, staff members could be interviewed, depending on the level or the intensity of what was said, what they said, we would look into that. Or we had, the outcome may be transient, but that doesn't mean that law enforcement or other entities aren't also involved in that investigation.
So for each time there's a threat, is this entire packet filled out with the threat assessment and response protocol form?
No, the entire, this entire packet is only completed when it is very serious substantive at the bottom.
Okay.
But parts of this may be used to help come to that conclusion. So you may use the interview piece.
Right.
And use those questions, and you might not have to ask all of them, depending on what was said, or written, or posted, or whatever means that threat came from, but you can use and pull from pieces of that to come to your conclusion.
So then, just the report would be done. If it's determined there's no threat, is there no report done, I guess?
There might not be a full report, but it would be documented.
So it's part of it, so say there's a threat, like it's part of it, and then the kid says, "Oh, I was just joking." Part of it, like checking to see, do they have access to firearms? I mean, is that always a part of it? Is that something we always want to know? Like,
Depending on what the threat is.
Like if the threat is, okay, I'm gonna, don't come to school tomorrow because, you know, I'm gonna shoot it up, and then someone talks to me, they're like, "Hi, I was just joking," like.
Talking with the parent, asking about access to firearms. There have been some times when local law enforcement has gone to the home, and the parents have consented to safety checks of the home, let them see the child's bedroom, go ahead and search it. The parent has to consent to that, or we've had parents show that the firearms are locked up in a gun safe. There's a lot of variety of different situations.
So you may not be able to answer this, so let's just say the police do go because, you know, and then they, the parents are like, "No, you're not checking my house." "Yeah, we have guns. They're locked up. Just believe me." What happens then?
I think it also depends on the other interviews of the witnesses, and you look at the totality of the situation and determine based on all of that evidence that would just be one part of it that would help you determine the level of the threat.
Yeah, I didn't figure you'd give me specific, because it's going to be really specific to the circumstances.
Absolutely.
And I assume the kid.
Yeah, and you're going to look at that kid's, you know, their record. You know, we've had parents, yeah, this is an independent situation, but we do have to look at the kids, you know, has there been a sudden drop in grades, attendance? You know, is this the first time a behavior has happened? Is there a pattern of where there's been similar behaviors, and now it's escalated to a different level? I think all of those things are taken into account. And a lot of the teachers that serve on those threat assessment teams, the buildings have tried to find teachers that see the most students in the building. So for example, at an elementary, it might be one of the AMP teachers because they see all the students in the building. Were a fifth-grade teacher, but third-grade student made the threat, they may not have that kind of knowledge of the student.
At what point is law enforcement involved if they are? I mean, how is that decision made?
I think it depends on what the threat is. Anything with a weapon, we're calling, at the high schools, we have the SROs, we're contacting the city or township, depending on where that school's located, and then depending on where the student lives, may depend if other agencies are contacted as well.
I'll go with Alan's side before you ask that, Tim. But go back to Julie's scenario. I can't think of the time to correct. I'm wrong. If somebody says that, we got law enforcement involved, we need to safely check the house.
Yeah, I guess my question was, but then you come to my house, and I'm like, "No, you're not going to be here. Just trust me." Then what? So at some point in that scenario, and it is worst-case scenario, a situation where we don't allow the student to come to school, or we, I mean.
Search on when they come in.
Right.
I mean, what is.
Safety check.
There could be safety plans that are implemented. There could also be punitive consequences, emergency removal until the investigation is concluded. It could lead to a suspension. It could also be a possible recommendation for expulsion depending on the situation.
Do we ever do the, like, the safety plan where, you know, a particular child's coming or concerned?
Check.
Somebody checks.
Absolutely.
Or we're.
Absolutely.
Backs are checked, etc., red.
We've eliminated lockers from students before. They have to keep their belongings in the office, so they don't have access to a locker anymore. We do referrals to social workers, outside agencies, because I think a lot of times we see a direct correlation of mental health issues.
So, yes.
Those proactive factors exist as well.
In the training that you all do through the state or other agencies, do they talk about parent communications and recommendations on how to, and I know the obvious number one concerns privacy. We're not trying to, you know, broadcast other students, but in terms of informing the public and informing them as to what's going on and to assuage their concerns, is there training on that as well?
They don't really hit on that as much. I would say that we do get feedback more from our local law enforcement on that of the, I know people don't like it when messages are sometimes vague, but sometimes they're intentionally vague because if there is an ongoing criminal investigation, we cannot let our communication impede that investigation with local law enforcement. And I know that that's hard.
Yeah.
As a parent.
Yeah, and I think it's hard, and I understand it, and I often find myself explaining that, that this is, it's a lot more complicated, but it's still, I'm, I think, one of my concerns has been the messaging, and I'm not trying to give away more information, but at the same time, explain that, you know, we've done these steps, and this is what, we've determined there is no threat, or we've contained the threat, or to give a level of, so parents can go, "Okay," as opposed to creating more concern, I guess, and more panic than generates rumors.
I think it's safe to say, if there were a threat assessment done at a building level, and if at the district level, we ever felt that there was immediate danger or risk of immediate danger, we wouldn't be.
Right.
In the building, not following that.
Right.
And that's hard to ask, you know, tell parents to trust us because it's a kid.
Right.
No parent, I get it, but.
Yeah.
I guess that wouldn't be my decision never made.
I mean, I often say, listen, they aren't going into that building as well. So this mean, everybody's, but it's hard, I think, because sometimes it's so vague that parents.
It makes it worse.
Yes.
Because it's like, oh, there was a threat. What are they doing? So it's like, yeah, and I get it.
What does that mean? Everything is okay?
It's the balance of messaging.
Well, yeah, because you're sending your most precious, you know, your child into a building, and you want to know that everything's safe.
Safe.
Or is it reasonable?
Absolutely. Got to balance that with, can't necessarily say.
Well, we could say.
I mean, couldn't we say that, you know, parents have been interviewed, or, I mean, is that acceptable? Parents have, you know, the nature of the investigation has changed place. That's a good question. You know, without identifying.
We don't technically say that, you know, we're, we have a protocol.
We have a protocol, and we've done X, Y, and Z, as opposed to just trust us, everything, you know.
The police.
We've done it, and we've done it.
So.
So sometimes our protocol has been followed, but the issue is on the, if it is that very serious substantive threat, and if there is a criminal investigation on top of the school's investigation, that's where it gets a little muddy.
Well, couldn't you say at that point, there, you know, there's a, you know, local law enforcement have an ongoing investigation, and we're not going to keep that.
We have that.
But here's a.
We're cooperating and doing what they're telling us.
Yeah, following the lead of local law enforcement.
Both things can happen.
Yep.
Anyway. I think it's the consistency, consistency as well. I think, what I know, and we've already chatted a little bit about this, is the consistency of how we need to work with the folks who are sending the messaging to make sure they're referring back to our anchor document, that says, these are the things you should include, instead of sometimes they feel like they have a sense of urgency to get a message out and not realizing that, again, it may cause for more concern because there isn't enough detail. Even if it's, this is what has happened, we are working with law enforcement agencies, children are safe, or whatever that recipe for messaging is. We need to be consistent across all of our buildings to make sure that we do that. And I know we've had, this was your office going, "Yeah," because we talked about it, but I think we've trained them, we've spoken with them, we've given them anchor documents, but I think too, sometimes what happens, unfortunately, and I'm not making excuses, but it is, I want to get something out, so let me get something out, and it's a reaction instead of a thoughtful, but we have to be thoughtful because it can cause more of a state of panic for our parents and for our kids.
We have to be thoughtful, but we also have to be prompt. Like, you can't wait.
Right.
You know, we have thirty-six hours, your kids are going to school tomorrow, right?
We've made that, we've made that very clear to get the appropriate stakeholders, district, local, and all of those communications in a proper.
That's correct.
Because a lot of times, I think, when building principals are questioning, should I send this? Should I not send this? A lot of that has to do with how many phone calls we need, and if I got them in the last five minutes, and this is out, and then they realize, hey, this needs to, we need to get ahead of this. But we have put those protocols in place that you're going to work with the appropriate people, and the appropriate communication in a proper fashion. Going back to Kim's point, too, about the rumors that can go, we made it a point this year to include, we didn't always do it, include whether a weapon was involved or not. That's on every piece of communication that will belong with threats, because that got taken out of context with social media and everything else. So, yeah.
They fill the gap if we don't have enough information.
Right.
They fill it in or ask more questions. So we have to be very purposeful and, to your point, timely, and to make sure that we reduce anxiety here and cause.
Well, and I think that's helpful, giving that information about the weapon, because then, you know, if you're watching social media, you will see the parents are like, they'll repeat the message and put it right in there and say, "Not true. This will address this," you know. If we don't say it, then it's.
They create their own narrative.
Yes.
And they'll get the message wrong, right? That's the thing. You don't tell the story, someone else will, and they'll get it wrong.
Yeah, I mean, they need accurate information. Again, it's their children. It's.
But they're all, they're all. They're just reporting from inside. My kids spoke to somebody who saw the weapon, or, you know, that kind of rumor that starts to.
Right.
And that, that gets repeated, and then it's, oh, well, there must be a weapon, and.
So we have to say.
Right. There's not.
There isn't.
And we were, but I think it was choppy in that instance, so.
It's just inconsistent, I think.
I also think, too, we need to leverage the power of Facebook, right? Because when people have the commentary from the letter, and they have responded by saying, "No, here's the message from the school," and that's been helpful. Sometimes what also happens is that the message is out on Facebook, and we don't even know until it's like, what? How many people? No, that's not right. That's not right. That's not right. And the rumor mill is going, and almost at the same time, we're trying to figure out the facts of what's going on, and at the same time, the narrative is taking on its own life, if you have, and, but it's still, we need to be ready to pull together. And as Tim said, we have reiterated to our building administrators that there are certain people that need to be around the table when you're crafting a message, period. It's not an independent, I'm going to whip it out right now. There is an expectation that certain people are around the table and give them feedback and reviewing what that communication is. So we make sure we're hitting all the points, because we also know that it could look different for, what that message may look like at an elementary school versus a high school in some regards, and being sensitive with work. And so, something else we are taking into consideration. But thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Any more questions before?
Do you think of anything, feel free to contact me, and I will answer them.
Thank you.
Such a lot of.
That was a good presentation, though.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
It really was. It's very thorough, and it is a complicated, we were in a session all day at Washington Global, and that was pretty comprehensive training, and it's a lot to understand, but you really captured it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are now at a portion of our agenda allocated for public participation for items that are on the agenda. Okay, and no one is present for that. Did I skip over you? Nope, you don't have a report, okay. Adam, I think we're with you.
Just have one recommendation for the, for the meeting here, to recommend approval of an additional insurance opt-out incentive per exhibit.
A little approval.
Any comments or questions?
Thanks for your continued work, everyone.
Yep.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, now we are with you, Dr. Motley.
Yes, thank you. I would like to recommend item 5.1, which is the appointment of Mr. Alexander Tibbets as Assistant Director of Technology and Innovation.
A little approval.
I'll second.
Can I answer questions?
I have lots of comments. I'm going to brag on you a little bit, Alex. Alex is here with us tonight. Alex has, is bringing nine-plus years of experience to our district. And ironically, when he showed up for the interview, the story has it. He let himself in because he already has a father, because he's been working with our district up through, our A site through Nauaka for several years, and has already worked on several of our servers and all that language that IT uses, and I don't know what those items are called, but he has been in every building, in every server room, working on our network, very familiar, which is a big chunk of what we are going to ask. He doesn't have to learn the layout of our buildings, right? He already knows where the closets are and where he needs to report. But even more importantly, he has a Bachelor of Science in Information Technology from the University of Toledo. I know that he also enjoys challenges. He really takes pride in his work. And he said, if someone calls me with a problem, we talked about this in the interview, that it's his job to take responsibility to not only take on the problem, but to fix the problem, and he takes pride in making sure he can do it in a timely manner. He has great listening skills and is hardworking with a positive attitude. And just a comment from one of his references, Brad Relinger, Relinger, who works out at Nauaka, he says, "Alex has consistently proven to be a skilled, dependable, and adaptable team member, contributing significantly to our technology operations." He says, "Alex also repeatedly displayed remarkable flexibility and impressive ability to quickly address and complete tasks. Alex excels in documenting our network infrastructure and has a level of professionalism that is an invaluable asset. One of Alex's greatest strengths is his independence and the fact that he takes initiative." So we are quite happy to have a person, a gentleman with this caliber of experience and work ethic join our team here in Slovenia. So, welcome, Alex. We know that we look forward to working with you for years to come, and I know Darren is happy, and Tyler's over there burning, so you got two people right there in the department that are just like, ready to go and move forward. And those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you. Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I may need your cell phone for when I have problems.
I'll text it to you. Just because Darren is back there, I have to add, in the interview process, I was in the first large committee when we interviewed candidates, and one of the questions is, you know, why, why you and I for this job? And Alex looked at me. And Alex looked at me, and he had just a stone cold look on his face, and he goes, "Well, because when Darren needs something, he calls me." I went, "We gotta get this guy."
Perfect. Thanks again. Moving on, I would like to recommend item 5.2, which is a parking lot use agreement between the Board of Education and Five Lakes Church. The document is attached.
A little approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to recommend item 5.3. There are a number of policies that are there for a first read. No action or fire on item 5.3. I will move on to item 5.4, unless you had a discussion with item 5.3, if you wanted to share anything.
I did wanna, I mean, it is a lot of policies, so I wanted to know if you all were comfortable moving to a second read next week, or if you wanted to postpone that until January. Most of the changes are not substantive, but there are some.
A lot of it, a lot of it was the legal, I didn't, nothing jumped out at me as major substantive, but it was a lot of legal changes and...
But it's a lot to look at, so.
Yeah, it was a lot to look at.
It is a lot.
I can't keep all this information on my personal cell phone.
All right, no. Why don't we put it on the agenda for next week?
Okay, so we can move forward. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Moving on to item 5.4, we have a donation of 24,000 cups to our school district by Mr. Chris Thompson. The outstanding value is $500.
A little approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
Are we talking red Solo cups? Cups?
Just cups? Thank you very much.
I also was wondering what kind of cups.
Like coffee cups?
It's awesome, like, thank you very much.
There's a lot of cups.
A lot of cups.
Thank you.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.5, which is a overnight field trip. We have two of them on our agenda for the Science Olympiad team. It's, one is invitationals at Ohio State University in Columbus, and the second one also is for Science Olympiad team for the State Tournament at Ohio State. I recommend approval for both. One is in January, and one is in April of 2025.
Call for approval.
No second. Can I answer questions? Please call the roll.
Greg?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 5.6 is a first read of a recommendation to come. We are looking at approving in the future the calendar for the 26, 27 school year. We've adopted a draft calendar option. We did have both unions and employees have an opportunity to vote, to give a recommendation for me and which to consider. And I'm going to turn it over to Tim a little bit, so that he can discuss what the major difference is with this particular calendar, because there is a change.
Yeah, so, as we always try to plan, I had a couple of years just for our community and our families, but this is obviously the 26, 27 calendar. One change significantly that we haven't done in the district is, unlike this year and next, we end before Memorial Day, so we had a day to give back to students and teachers, and we were trying to determine where that could go, to the extended winter break, to extend spring break. But it was determined, and it was even voted on by about 64% based on the two options we had. Start date and end date were the same, both breaks were the same, but what do we give this day back? And we decided, it kind of falls into places where we just had the Thanksgiving break, where we were gonna take the Tuesday of Thanksgiving break off, students and teachers won't have school that day. And then to tie in for that Monday, we're moving the January Professional Learning Day to the Monday of Thanksgiving, which is a long, it'll technically be a fall break for our families. We've had, I don't want to say pushback, but I don't think teachers or families love the Monday, Tuesday of Thanksgiving, just the amount of instruction, quality instruction taking place out of two days a week. So it's an opportunity to give, you know, have that week off for families, whether they're traveling. Attendance is usually a little bit lower with students during that week as well, so it made sense to tie in for 26, 27, the week of Thanksgiving break. It's been asked, hey, if this is approved by the board, can we look at next year for 25, 26? The tough thing with that is, we would have to make up another day somewhere else. But moving forward, if this works well for 26, 27, we may need to extend the teacher workday to like a Monday of winter break, or a teacher workday to a Monday, or the follow, after the last day of school for students in the summer, which could tie in. But I'd, I'd be surprised if families weren't on board with us to have a fall break, so. Thanks to Amy, Amy was there, I know Adam and Josh, a couple of their administrators, but like Dr. Motley said, teachers were in the room as well, so we'll see numbers, so it was pretty unanimous, and we wanted to, even though we gave two options, there are kind of two options, we're unanimous, and we were looking for just from a community perspective, moving forward, so. That's the proposal for choices.
I think that's a great idea, but I wonder, and I'm gonna guess not, because just how it works, you know, for our staff, you know, for them to travel, but now they have to be here on Monday, is there a way to work that in for the staff and for all of you? I mean, simply, you know, they wanted to travel and leave on Saturday, they can't, because they have to be here on Monday.
Correct. They could, a personal thing, could do that. But based on the contractual 185 working days, if we didn't treat that as a professional one, they'd have to make up another day somewhere else.
Yeah, I think that.
They can leave on Monday nights, so.
Yeah, well, you know, they leave three days early. But even if they used to, yeah, that's what I figured, I figured, you know, and that was a way to do it for the students also, would it be the...
I mean, I think it's a great idea, because I know there's just not much going on those two days. We're watching movies, we're, you know, and it's kind of like, why are we going? So I think it's a great idea. I also just realized that this will be my daughter's senior year. It's freaking me out.
Goes quick, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll put it out in the second read for next week, if any questions reach out.
Will we still provide transportation to the community down in Phoenix for those days?
Yeah, we have to. They generally mirror what we're doing.
For that, I just was like, it's a thing for that entire week.
Some do sometimes, even now that there's spring breaks or...
I want to say St. Joe's, I think they have like conferences or something, so we got ready right now for Monday.
And then are the November and May teacher workdays, are those tied to election days?
They are. They are 100%, yes.
Thank you.
I recommend item 5.7. This is an increase in our free school peer tuition rate. As noted, 145 per month, and the sibling rate is 120 per month. This would be more to 25, 26 school year, and it is an increase of $20.
It's been a while since we've had...
It has been a while since, in time, yes.
I'm a little proud.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 5.8, which is the 25, 26 High School Course of Study. This is the program that lists all the course options for students for next school year. They will start scheduling here right before winter break, I believe, and then we will just continue all the way through January and a little bit into February, so. It's hard to read.
A little approval. No second.
Any comments or questions?
Anything new or noteworthy? I just tried to scroll through, and I didn't see anything highlighted.
Absolutely, not that I noted. I know we have a couple of courses at the high school. We're waiting to see if they will run based on student interest. But as far as new courses, there's a handful, Tom, that I recall, but nothing, nothing major. I think elective is more than anything.
All the language is still in there? Obviously, we're waiting to see how, you know.
Yes. German, French, and Spanish are all being offered, and we'll respond based on...
Based on interest, right?
Yep. Thank you, good question.
Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tiversky.
Thank you, I am recommending items 6.1 through 6.4 on a consent agenda basis. 6.1 are licensed substitutes. 6.2 is for a substitute social worker. 6.3 is a lifeguard, and 6.4 is licensed extraducant.
Oh, approval on a consent agenda basis, item 6.1 through 6.4.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Is the lifeguard licensed to use? He has a lifeguard license?
Well, he's gonna have to be, for us to put him up there.
I just didn't know, like, the, 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 the license.
That's just out of my office, the person that handles this section of the board agenda handles the lifeguard. So it usually falls into her section.
I don't really think it's usually under there, is it?
Yeah, it has been for the last year and a half. It was under supplemental, but it's not a supplemental. It was under classified, there's one classified, so.
It's a student, right?
It's...
Maybe it needs its own section, lifeguard section.
Students.
Could be a fine...
Student employees. Adam?
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. I am recommending items 7.1 through 7.3 on a consent agenda basis. 7.1 are classified new hires. 7.2 are the classified personnel changes. And 7.3 are classified resignations.
A little approval on a consent agenda basis, item 7.1 through 7.3.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
Glad to see Kristen Dickerson coming back.